Couple of work session. Couple of work session for the city of Martinburg. March 26th and October 24th. You've had a chance to review the minutes, which will be a regular session, a work session, and the executive session from March 12th. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Presentations for the local police department. New business will be approval of the city manager recommendation to reappoint Mauna LeVain as the chair of the ER and Pre-Adulterated Agency. I think it's authority. As her initial term is expired January 1st, and this would give her a new term to 2027. Any questions on that? Ordances and resolutions, resolution 2401. Basically, Georgia City's work, from Georgia cities peak April 21st to 27th. And it's a red, a resolution recognizing and encouraging all this support and celebration. There'll be several activities that maybe someone will explain.
Yeah, we have a lot of activity.
Good, drop. Item number two, simply because we have some things that we're still working on. We wanted to look really good, we'll give you all the tour. And then, item number three, Amy Anderson, newborn safety devices. She's going to come up and make a presentation.
Ms. Anderson, you want to do that now, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because as it works, that's right. That's what we have.
Yeah, it absolutely is. So Ms. Anderson's going to come up and do a presentation on a very worthwhile cause that Lieutenant Beaver, you want to come up and introduce her real quick and kind of give us a summary of that? Brought to our attention, we've reached out to her, and I think it would be a worthwhile cause for us to do. And I think we have a... Miss Moynihan.
All right, this is Moynihan's friend, her name's Amy Anderson. There's already a law in place, but she's going to go over this with you. I'm trying to take everything off. There's already a law in place for women who want to leave their kids with someone instead of going to dumpster, or less than have a toilet, or, you know, just abandon the baby. There's a new law that you can actually leave your child. Like I said, we're going to go over hundreds, but there's basically a new thing they're coming up with, because some women just don't want that interaction with someone, they're a little embarrassed to have an interaction with someone. So she's just going to give you all a little presentation on what this baby box thing is all about.
Hey, my name is Amy Anderson. I'm just here as an advocate for this program. I learned about it, and I just feel like it is an amazing program that I really think should be in every community everywhere. So I've asked for Mr. Baker to kill a video. Were you able to do that? We've got two short videos. It's going to be less than five minutes, but if you will, please, let's do this first, and then we'll give you a floor from there.
All right. Got you. The video's on.
I'm not, Amy, sorry. I'm just going to... Yeah, that one. Yeah, that one.
This guy just heard something in the woods. How did you hear it? We heard it from our house. No, my case is a baby, it's an animal. It's fine. It's fine. It's fine. It's fine for you. It's all right. Three, two, one, three, four, three, two, one. Oh, so sorry. I'm so sorry. Breathing, breathing, crying. Try to calm down. Cat, bird. Oh, and look how precious you are. Look who's here. Here. A clown. Girl. Yeah, she's a sweetheart. She's a sweetheart. Grab me again. Grab the...
This is just one example. This was actually in Forsyth County in 2019. So this was in our state. We know that there have been at least 14 cases like this in the state since 2017. Those are the ones that we know of just through news reporting, not through any type of, not through any type of FOIA request, not through any type of Health Department numbers. That is just pure and simple of what's been on the news. The scary part to me is that if we know about 14 of them, 10 of those babies did not survive. We don't know how many that no one ever found, you know? So to me, that's the part of it that was the most disturbing. This year alone, already, there have been news reports of at least 11 children in the United States, not in our state, but in the United States as a whole, that have been abandoned, either left in a, they've been left in the woods, left in a dumpster, you know, left on the front porch, left in the back of somebody's truck. And of those, only four have survived. So again, I apologize, three have survived. Those are the reasons that this, to me, just pulled on my heart. The second video is actually a video that is a little bit about a safe surrender. This is what happened when a parent actually chose to leave, to leave their baby in a newborn safety device. And it's a much happier story.
We're hearing from firefighters after a baby was surrendered at a fire station in Carmel.
The baby boy is one of two babies that were surrendered in just the last days. Two Safe Haven baby boxes across the state of Indiana. Logan Gay has more tonight on how those little babies are doing.
Carmel firefighters here at Station 45 regularly test the alarm for their Safe Haven baby box. But when that alarm went off Tuesday morning, and they opened the doors, they quickly realized it was not a drill.
It went off without a hitch.
After dedicating their Safe Haven box around three years ago, Carmel Fire Department welcomed their first baby.
We were sitting in the station, just like any other day, baby box alarm went off. So we went back there to see what was going on, and lo and behold, there's a baby sitting inside the baby box wrapped in towels.
The healthy baby boy was received with open arms. And fireman John Moriarty says this is a time for celebration, because the system worked.
I'm so excited when I saw him come out of the room with the baby. They loaded the baby in the ambulance, and I got in my car, and we went to the hospital.
The founder of Safe Haven baby boxes, Monica Kelsey, was abandoned when she was an infant. Now she wants women to know there are safe options for them and their babies.
We honor you today, that what you have done is selfless, it's remarkable, and it's courageous. And you should be very proud of yourself.
After the baby was delivered safely to the hospital, the Carmel fire crew celebrated the unforgettable moment with a birthday cake for the baby boy, and wished to many, many more.
Our hope is, is that this baby boy will find a forever loving home the same way, and find their forever family as well.
We're hearing from firefighters after a baby was surrendered at a fire station.
So that was an example. That is what the, the legal term is a newborn infant safety device, a newborn safety device. For ease of speech, I'm calling it a baby box. It's just a lot easier to spit out, but some people, the word baby box seems to have an negative connotation. Some people get a little bit nervous about that word. So I want you to understand, we're talking about a newborn safety device, but I stumble over it sometimes. One of the reasons that I really got involved in this is that my daughter is a nurse, and she works at Hughes Spalding downtown, next to Grady. She works in the primary care, where they have a lot of underserved community, obviously. And they had a mom come in. The mom had a drug addict, she was a drug addict. She came in with her mother, and she had, the baby was 28 days old. She had missed three appointments. They really did not expect her mom to show up. Mom showed up, handed the baby to the nurses, and said, "I can't do this," and walked out the door. As a mother, I was furious. I could not believe somebody could do that. I just thought, in what world? And of course, my daughter reminded me what world that we live in. And it was very frightening, it was very scary, but it was also very eye-opening, because, you know, the fact that this mother and this grandmother knew they could not care for this child, and decided that under Georgia law, they can, up until 30 days, unless the child has been abused, up until 30 days, you can walk into any fire station, police precinct, or hospital, and surrender your child, no questions asked. If you choose to give information, you can, but it is not a requirement under Georgia law. So, so that's what this mother did, which is what got me started in this whole thing. And when I found this, I thought, well, this is a very interesting option, so I'm going to find out more about it. So what they are, you saw the picture. These are boxes, incubators, that are built into the side of, most of the time they're firehouses. They can be built into the side of hospitals also, but usually it's a firehouse. Mainly because we love cops, but people are scared of cops. They think that there's going to be legal repercussions, so they don't like to put them in police stations. But people don't worry that the firefighters are going to take them to jail. So they, apparently, that's where they like to surrender. In the past, since 2017, these boxes have been used 30, don't, I may make, I believe it's 35 times. But also, this, this particular program, they have a hotline that is made 24/7, so they can actually talk with parents to offer them parenting solutions, offer them adoption plans, offer them all of the other things, because this is obviously a last resort. This is the last resort before they decide to ditch this kid wherever. And so through the 800 number, they've been able to help a lot of parents find a leave of way to surrender those babies to keep them safe. So I think that's really important. One of the problems that we have right now, and I'm sure I'll put it out there first, because we need to be aware of it, inside the packet that I've given to each one of you, is the code, the Georgia code. The Georgia code says physical custody. You have to give, you have to turn a newborn over, and they have to have physical custody. The company that is doing these is not real sure where Georgia would stand on the mother's protection with that words. We don't know. I was part of a group who tried really hard this session to get the wording changed on that law this session. Session ends on Thursday. It is not going to pass. We were hopeful, but, which is, you know, I kind of feel like we put the cart before the horse a little bit, because we, we do think it will pass, we just think we ran out of time. We did not come up against any horrible people that were unhappy about it. We didn't come up with anybody fighting against us. We just literally ran out of time. And so we are pushing again. We have both state senators and state representatives on board. We're going to try and push it through both houses next year, and then when crossover comes, hopefully, one of the other of them will be ready. So that's what our goal is. So that is to say that if you guys decide that you want this program, I think it is an awesome program. I think that is up to your attorneys to decide when and if it is the right time for you to do that. But if you were to decide that maybe once the law passes next year, that's when you want to do it, then that gives time to look at budgeting issues, that gives time to look at all those other things. As far as budgeting issues go, just jump there, because money's always important. First of all, this requires a buy-in by your fire chief. If your fire chief is not on board, this program does not work. It will not work, and there's absolutely no reason to try and proceed. So, I don't know your fire chief, but I don't think he's here today.
He's not.
Okay. So, so we definitely want to have this conversation with him, because, like I said, it's his firehouse, it's the whole being inside of his firehouse, and it's his fire department that would be responsible for making sure that that, that box is working. The, the, as far as the responsibilities for the firehouse, though, there has to be an installation, so the firehouse would be responsible, or the city would be responsible, or this council would be responsible, I'm not sure where that lies, with finding a contractor that would do that. Now, some cities have a contractor that this is who we use. If we're doing government buildings, some people put out a bid, some people do whatever. That would, that would be a responsibility that we would have to determine. Now, that would be choosing that person, that would not be paying that person. That would be deciding who that person is. There'd also have to be an electrician involved, because there is a three-part alarm on these boxes. The boxes have an alarm, so when the parent opens the outside door, there's an alarm that triggers to 911. I mean, it just says, hey, the door's open. But you doesn't want it to go up inside the firehouse, because obviously, you're, the hope is for anonymity. So if a fire alarm's going off inside the house, obviously, the mother's going to turn and run. Then, once, there's a laser beam, and so once the baby's placed inside of the box, that second alarm goes off, says, okay, now you have a baby in your box. When mom or dad closes that door on the outside, there's a lock that engages, that doesn't allow for the door to be open from the outside. So for safety measures, if you saw me over here, you thought that's what I was about to do, and you saw me do it, you can't then run up behind me and grab the door. It's now shut. The only way to get to it is from the inside. Fireman inside the firehouse, first responder inside the firehouse can now go to that. If for some reason, everybody at the firehouse was out on a call, it would just be like 911, it would just go to your next person, whoever that next person is. So if it's your next station over, if it's your police department, if it's whoever that, I don't know how your 911 system works, but it goes directly down the chain to the next person. Generally, with all the tests on these, those babies do not remain inside that incubator for more than five minutes. That's the longest time that they're there. Usually, it's averaged closer to two minutes, because most of the time, there's someone inside that firehouse. The, it is heat regulated, so it stays at a temperature to keep the baby warm while the baby gets there. Some of them have cameras on it. That depends on your state law or your request, on whether there's a camera inside of it. They are made to withstand hurricane winds, they're made to withstand extreme cold. And the fire, the fire department's responsibility is to check it. Morning shift checks it, evening shift checks it, to make sure all the alarms are working, there's nothing, you know, broken, no lights are flashing, nothing like that, to make sure that there's not, to make sure that there is a fail-safe, so that, you know, a baby's not going to get put in there, and nobody's going to realize it for three days. So that, that's not how that works. There's a protocol that has to be followed each and every time. If the baby was to be surrendered in that box, there's a protocol that says, this is what happens. And that is Georgia protocol according to surrender, it is not according to using the box. It is just, in general, if a mom walks into a fire station and hands a firefighter a baby, there's a protocol that says, we assess the baby, we take the baby to the hospital, we check and see if the baby's good, we notify defects, and the proceedings happen in that manner. So, right now, I think that I've put most of the information in the packets that I've given to you. Have you, have the opportunity to look around it, decide if this is something that you think that your city would like to go forward with, if you want to go forward with it, that's, you know, a decision that you guys would make. But if you decide to wait on it and go forward at some time, and you do, you are interested in it, you do think it's a worthwhile program, and you would like to see it go forward, what I would ask of you is to promote it, talk to people about it, and learn about it. I've put resources in here for you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But I think that the more people that we can get interested in it, the more push we can have to go on and get this law changed, so that this can become a reality in our state.
Questions, Ms. Mayor?
No questions. It seems pretty straightforward. It definitely has a benefit. It'll be interesting to see how the state law goes, so that we're not creating a scenario that puts a mother at risk or danger.
Absolutely.
When she's trying to surrender the child. So we do need to find out what's going to happen with that.
Ms. Corr.
Yeah, question. So if we, you know, thought we were going to discuss about it, if we ever decide to do it? So we, our, by the family, we receive the baby, turn it to the hospital, and at that, that end of our liability, we don't have any...
Correct, correct. Absolutely. There's no liability to the city. It, like I said, it doesn't change the law that exists now, that if a mom walks into your fire station now and hands a baby off, the job of your city is for your fire department to get that baby safely delivered to a hospital, and then that's where your responsibility ends in that manner.
So the, the box and the insulation, and those kind of, so do we have a budget for it, or the city would...
You know what? I hit that, and I skipped completely over it. Thank you for that. Okay, so, yes, there is a cost involved, but the cost to you guys, it is not a part of your budget. This is a grassroots effort, so that the fundraising is done outside of you, so me, my church, your church, the Rotary Club, the Kiwanis, you know, your next-door neighbor, will raise the money to put them. There's a $15,000 per room fee. That, that is your box, that is your training on it, that is your, any updates, any technology, any maintenance on it. That is making it, making people aware of it, that is the press releases, that is all of that stuff involved, and that's a one-time fee. Then each year, there's a $500 fee, and there is a cost of the alarm. If you're, if you're, whatever station or whatever location that you choose is not already, if, if they can't use the existing alarm system, there might have to be a new alarm system put in. But all of those things, the $1,500, I mean, the $15,000 for the box, the cost of the installation, the $500 for the yearly fee, and the, and the alarm system can all be done through local fundraising. It does not have to be a line item on your budget.
Thank you. Ms. Deaver.
I wasn't clear on the transfer of custody part of that. Can you...
All right. So, just, just like current law, if a parent comes in, a parent says, "I can't do this," and they hand the baby off to you, then what happens is you, as the person receiving, who'll be the firefighter, the police officer, the medical personnel, then transfers that baby to the hospital for assessment, and then that baby is transferred to defects custody at that time.
But when it's put in the box? So, you're not transferring it to a person. So how does that transfer of custody work? I mean, as far as the law is concerned, you know, and the mother and...
Right.
Adoption and all of that type of issue.
Right. So, so currently, we're in a gray area within the box. But what we're talking, I, I think what you're asking is if the, when, when the surrender happens, it is the exact same as what is currently on the law. If defects has a protocol that says, we have a child's surrender, we're going to do X, Y, Z, we make sure that this child is not a kidnapped baby, we make sure that this child is not a baby that's been trafficked, we make sure that this child's not been abused, and is in within the 30-day of legal, and then we proceed. And it's my understanding, I don't work for defects, I don't work for them, so, but it's my understanding that if all the criteria are met, then there's a certain protocol that says this baby goes, rather than a foster family, there will be a reunification foster family, it's a foster-to-adopt family. So they try and put that baby with a foster-to-adopt baby scenario. Because, of course, still under Georgia law, and under, and every law in the state, in every law in every state, the mom still has a period of time for all the things that they still have time for. Does that answer your question?
It did. I'm just, yeah, of course, it created more. As far as, you know, the 30, 30-day-old infant?
Right.
And if it's older?
If, if the child is older than 30 days, that child is not legally surrendered in the state of Georgia, and that then becomes a, an issue, a law enforcement issue.
Ms. Corr.
I know that you talked about, we've forgotten the fee, but here, I'm seeing in the last column say other fees not included initials from $5,000 to $7,000.
The $5,000 to $7,000 is an installation fee, I believe is what you're, what you're looking at.
So that a rescue will pay that installation fee, or will it be on the CD paying for it?
The initial fundraising goal for a box at this time is $25,000. That takes care of the $15,000 for the program fee, and $10,000 to take care of installation and all the other stuff. So is that, does that answer your question?
Yes, that's excellent. I mean, I like the, the program in the way because they give the mother more choice if they decide to get the baby.
That, the, the goal was to just give mom one more option, and it is the anonymous option, because the, the face-to-face surrender that is currently required is, it's a lot. It's a lot.
The video's powerful.
I agree.
I'm going to assume the fact that you're here means that somebody's at least talked to the fire department, so, knowing Chief Swett, I think he likes babies. You know, the other parts, when you look at, you know, instead of the Y's, you look at the Y-nots. If they can safely hand it to me, I mean, the, maybe you probably don't give them off their luck. But, you know, you would, you'd think having that other feature, in other words, they put them in a trash bag.
Right.
For goodness sakes.
Absolutely.
I, I think, I think this is not only something that we can do, you know, there's, you know, we do a series of events, we can easily do some fundraising. It's not something that's going to break the bank. During that process, that allows you to do some marketing, to let people know that, you know, we're good people, you know, the good part. We're, we're doing a budget here real soon anyway. You know, I, I, I guess I agree, and I just hear a little bit about, if I put it in the box, you know, that I'm, I'm, I'm the potential to prosecute you, if I don't it on the street.
You know, you're right.
So I'm thinking if, if I'm the jury, which one? Just give us a little bit of time, we'll build it in.
Trailblazers, first in Georgia.
There, there's not one in Georgia. There are actually, Alabama has two. Alabama passed their law last year in July. They put their first two boxes in in January. Their first box was used 12 days after installation. There's, but there's no boxes in Georgia. There are a couple boxes in Tennessee, and there are two boxes currently in Florida, but we have none. South Carolina has none.
I imagine if you went online, you'd find places, right? It still gets into the system, whether it happens through Martinburg, Georgia, or it happens in McDonough, or happens anywhere. Do I have a better...
Right. The, the, with the, with the advertisement of the 800 number, there, there's a person that manages that, they can say, you know, there's one, and they have said people drive long distances, mainly because, if I know him, do I want to walk in and hand him my baby? Because, you know, the minute that I walk away, I know he's going to call his wife, he's going to call the person down the street. No, I'm, I'm going to go outside of my area, probably. And so, you know, and, and y'all are really close to 75. There's lots of, lots of people running up and down the highway every day.
That's an alternative, it's pretty cool. The, just out of curiosity, how do they know that age? I mean, it's not like the baby's got a driver's license.
Right. That is, that has to do with medical doctors, and they figure all that out. There, I know that has to do with developmental things that the doc, that the doctors figure out, the same way they figured out now if, if a baby's gone abandoned somewhere, but I don't, I don't know how specifically they figure that out.
If there's no objection, why don't we tell the city manager, try to take it to the next level, bring it to a stern judgment, see if we can make a little work behind the scenes.
We have a couple more questions.
Oh, go ahead.
I mean, that game, Carmel.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's the how-to. I think the, the concept makes sense, that I would say, if I was proposing that, that it's just a matter of how you do it. And I'd rather take the risk than not. You know, because that's what you do. A divulgator costs us, I think, $5,000. A baby box?
Right.
A printing...
Well, all the contact information, all the resources that you need, and my, my cell phone number's on there, my email's on there, the contact information for the company, anything you could possibly need. anything you could possibly need, and I'll be more than happy to try and answer a question or at least get you in contact with anybody who can to do that. I appreciate your time so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in here, anything to say? It's important to your community.
I have one. So what is the maintenance on the box? If, if a child is placed in the box and, um, you know, taken into custody and everything, so what is the annual maintenance fee?
The annual maintenance fee is $500.
It's $500?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're watching the reading.
I can guess. Thank you.
Well, that's the work session. After that, I think we, you know. Vicky Jenny, why's that gonna answer? What I can answer?
Yes.
Good, are you forcing her to sign?
Well, guys, you got a celebrity in the house. But we, we do, we really, really do. He's a hard-working man. He's my comrade, he's a good friend of mine, and I'd just like to say to Mayor and Council that we are saying congratulations to our friend sitting back there in the back, Mr. Wayne Collins, is being selected as Clayton County's Veteran of the Month, April 2024. The ceremony will be held Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, at 5:30 PM, and the meeting address is at 112 Smith Street, Enixone, Jones Road, Georgia. We are asking, I've been there before, plan to arrive early, uh, Mr. Collins will receive multiple accolades, a lot of friends are gonna be there to support him. They do start on time, uh, he will lead the meeting with the pledge of allegiance and photo ops, he doesn't know it, but I'm super excited, Wayne, to, to be up here, yeah, I know he's gonna blast me later, but that's okay. But it is truly an honor, um, to see Wayne be recognized for this, and although he doesn't like to, you guys know how he is, you know, he's like, you know, it's not about that, but he works hard. He's very passionate about what he does, and I am very fortunate and blessed to serve alongside him. I've seen the work that this man does, I've seen it, and I've experienced it, and it's affected my life in a great way.
Is that the commissioner's office?
That's, that, that, that is, yes, yes it is.
Commissioner's office?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So, uh, Commissioner is at 5:30, plans to arrive early, that's on Tuesday, the 2nd.
Cause I know he needs some dinner.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So thank you, Wayne, for allowing me to come up and share that with you all. Congratulations, Wayne. He's speechless for the first time.
I haven't seen that in you.
Well, the meeting will start at 7:30, uh, so in the meantime, we can drink some coffee and, uh, give Mr. Wayne Collins a, 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 a formal.
Thank you, definitely.
So, well, we'll see y'all at 7:30.
I was expecting us to make sure it's alive.